Hi, welcome to the Village of Buchanan January 2018 Board Meeting. Our first meeting of the year. I'm going to do something a little different this evening. After we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to have a moment of silence for Joe O'Toole. Joe O'Toole was chief here. He came here in 1965 from the city of Peekskill. He was a police officer. Came here in 1965. He was our first detective here at the village police department. In 1980, he became the police chief, and in 1982, he retired. After that, he, most people know him also from on Washington Street. He had a hot dog stand. So, we all have many memories. People who grew up here have many memories of Joe O'Toole. So, I'd like to have a moment of silence after the pledge.
Not to mention, Madam Mayor, Joe was our grand marshal in our St. Patty's Day Parade a few years ago. So, Joe was a great Buchananite in his own way, and he's on our historical video we did a few years ago.
Great, good.
And he was a, he was a great man to have met, and certainly a character in his own right.
Yes, and he will be missed.
Yes.
Okay, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
We have no minutes this evening, and so first, we're going to start with comments from the floor, agenda items only.
We don't have an agenda.
Oh, that's not good. Okay.
How can I even comment if you don't have any?
I know. Okay. There we go. We'll give Eileen a few minutes in case she wants to comment on anything. It's a pretty straightforward meeting this evening, our first meeting of the year. Okay. Okay. No comments from the floor. Okay. Under New Business, Resolution A stating polling places and hours for the next village election, trustee function. Could you please read that for us?
Sure. Whereas the next general like village election shall be held on Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, and whereas according to the New York State Election Law, Section 15-104, Subpart III, the Board of Trustees of the village shall adopt a resolution which states the polling place in each election district and the hours during which the polls shall be open. Now be it therefore resolved that the polling places for the next general village election for District Number One and Number Two are located in the community room on the second floor of the municipal building, 236 Tate Avenue, Buchanan, New York. And be it further resolved that the hours which the polls shall be open will be between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m.
All right. Thank you, Rich. This is something we do every year. We have, the village elections are in March. This year, there are three positions that will be open, well, three positions that, to be filled. One is for mayor, the other are two trustees. So, this year, it's myself, Deputy Mayor Rich Funchen, and trustee Nick Zachary, who will be running. On a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Resolution B, accepting the resignation of a zoning board member. Could, Duane, trustee Jackson, could you please read that for us?
Yes. Village Resolution accepting the resignation of a zoning board member. Whereas the mayor and the board have received a letter of recognition from Michael, how do you pronounce that?
Cherico.
Cherico. Michael Cherico, a member of the zoning board effective December 13th, 2017. And whereas the mayor and the board wishes to extend their thanks to Mr. Cherico for his 23 years of service to the Village of Buchanan, now be it therefore resolved that the mayor and the village board of trustees hereby accept as for mentioned resignation letter effective December 13th, 2017.
Okay. Thank you, Duane. It's with great sadness that we accept this. Mike has been very good for the Village Buchanan. The last 23 years, he's served the village, and he has been just exemplary as a zoning board member, and he always put the best interests of the village ahead. So, very saddened to see this resignation. Mike is resigning. He has some health issues. We wish him the best and much happiness in the new year, and also much health. We also have, Mike, if you're listening, we have a certificate of appreciation for you that we will get to you, and we wish you the best, and thank you so much for your service to the village. On a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a comment also?
Sure, absolutely.
I was on the zoning board with Mike for 10 years, and I love the guy. Mike is a great guy. Aside from being a valuable member of the zoning board for 20-plus years, just a great person, and I'm sorry to see that his health is not letting him serve at this point, but we wish you the best, Mike. Hope to see you soon.
Thank you. Trustee Pasquale, could you read the next, please? Resolution C.
Yes, ma'am. Village of Buchanan Resolution Authorizing an Intermunicipal Agreement with the Village of Croton on Hudson. Whereas the, excuse me, whereas the town of Cortland is relocating its organic yard waste transfer station from its former Roahook facility to its new Ver Plank facility. And whereas the completion of the Ver Plank facility is expected to take one to three years during which time the town will not be able to accommodate the Village of Buchanan's organic waste. And whereas the Village of Croton on Hudson and the Village of Buchanan have evaluated entering into a intermunicipal agreement which would allow the Village of Buchanan to utilize the organic yard transfer station at three municipal place for lease disposal. And whereas the Village of Croton on Hudson will be billed by Westchester County as per current protocol a certain organic yard waste amount, and will then allocate said billing to the Village of Buchanan based on the tonnage amount of organic yard waste materials delivered, plus 15 percent. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board authorizes the mayor to sign the intermunicipal agreement with the Village of Croton on Hudson to allow the use of three municipal place for organic yard waste disposal according to the terms of the contract attached hereto.
Thank you, trustee Pasquale. Kevin, do you have any other comments about this?
Sure. Yeah. The town will not be able to accommodate our bundled clippings and bag leaves. With the switch over their facility, they don't have the space to maintain the transfer station at this point. When I reached out to them, they made an IMA earlier with Croton and suggested that we reach out to them as well. I did, and they gave us a copy of the same IMA that the town, that they signed with the town, plus the 15 percent I guess for the maintenance of the facility down there, the transfer station, and plus whatever the fee, the fee, the current fee of organic waste material pickup from Westchester County. So, they expect between one year and three years, and then they will have their facility locating Ver Plank, so at that point.
So, is this our first intermunicipal with the Village of Croton? I don't remember.
They're part of that three municipal, three IMA that we signed with the town, but this is the first one specifically with us in that.
Specific, okay. All right. So, you know, we, we look to do intermunicipal agreements with other communities as a cost savings in the future. We will be talking very shortly with another community on possible other agreements that we could do to save money and work together.
I have a question. Says here about charging the rate that the 15 percent. Now, are we currently paying the 15 percent for maintenance of the place?
We pay a quarterly fee to maintain through the town of Cortland. Currently, it's, I believe it's $2,000 something dollars per, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, to maintain the transfer station with the town. So, we are currently paying the fee and maintaining.
Oh, we currently, okay.
Theirs is just kind of laid out, structured differently with just 15 percent of the, of the amount that you're bringing there as an added fee.
Sure.
I just want to clarify on what this is costing us. It says that the county will bill the Village of Croton on Hudson for everything that they bring in, and it's going to be based on tonnage, and then the Village of Croton will turn around and charge us. So, does that mean that the Village of Croton is weighing the waste when we bring it? How do they charge us?
I believe that they're going to weigh the tonnage as it comes in. We estimate it-
When we bring it to them in Croton, they have the, they have the ability to weigh it?
They have a facility there, yeah. I believe they have a facility to weigh it.
Okay. So, they'll weigh us, and then-
They'll allocate it.
You know, if that comes to a ton, and then they go to the county and drop off 10 tons, then they know we are one-tenth. I mean, that's simplification, but they'll get the figures at both ends. They'll charge us the tonnage based on-
The rate that they charge that they take for, which I believe is about $28 or $29 per ton.
Yeah. Because it doesn't specifically say anywhere here that Croton will actually weigh it. It just says that they will, after they take all of their stuff to the county, then they will bill us based upon the tonnage figures provided to it by the county. So, they're not bringing our stuff in a separate truck, I'm assuming.
No, they, I looked at the facility when I drove by there. It looks like you go in there, there looks like there's some sort of a building with a scale.
There's a scale, okay.
And then they say out there-
And that's how they can charge us.
Then that's how it works.
That's how they know.
Otherwise, there's no way we're really be able to bill us.
Right, okay.
All right. So...
Okay.
Okay. On a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is information from offices and departments, Justice Court Report for November 2017. One of the amounts was $1,545, and the other is $1,206. I tell people that because they're, people ask, and they're kind of curious what's going on with court and other departments. Planning Board Minutes, November 16, 2017, received and filed. Attorney's Report. Stephanie, do you have anything for us this evening?
The only thing I have is an update on the White Street property. So, I commenced action, and waiting for word from the county, and then I'll get it served, and then hopefully it'll move along. I'm going to move it along.
Okay, good.
I have to get the Department of Social Services and the non-existent owner. So, I don't foresee it taking all that long.
Okay.
But I'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I know it's been a long process.
Yes.
This has been a very long process, but thank you for staying on top of that.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Administrator's Report.
I just wanted to let everybody know, we had a meeting last week about the Bannon Avenue Water Pit project. They were expecting to start, contractor, next week except for this cold weather. It's going to push the timeframe back. He's now expecting maybe to start in February, depending on how the weather is, but this is way too cold to get the project going.
They don't want to work in sub-zero weather outside. Hmm.
So, I just wanted to let everybody know, the project will probably take about six weeks or so. When I have a more firm date, maybe next month, I'll update you again on that. The only other thing I had was, I know there was a lot of questions about the governor's executive order to accept tax payments and the reasons that we're unable to do that. Some municipalities can because they've already established a tax warrant. In our case, we have no way to set a tax rate because we haven't even started to work on a budget. As well as the assessment role is also the other issue. On top of that is, that's not final till April 1st. I know some places have said that they would just take last year's amount, but that would just be an accounting nightmare, speaking with our auditors about trying to figure out a way to put that money somewhere, because in the end of the year, our general fund gets wiped out to zero. So, the money that we would be collecting for the next year would be moved out to somewhere that we, it just, it wasn't feasible for us, especially on such short notice as well.
And what were, there were a lot of other communities that we were talking about that.
Yeah, I was going to say, because it's been going around through the other villages that have the same fiscal year as us, and, what were the other ones? Arzley, Tarrytown, Pleasantville, Hastings, Mount Kiscoe, Maranick, Irvington, and Briarcliff all came out and said that it just wasn't possible to accept-
An accounting nightmare.
Yeah. To accept those kind of payments in advance.
Well, you know, not only that, because this is one of the things I'm going to talk about, but what did, let's, let's do the timeframe here. On December 22nd, which was the Friday before the Christmas weekend, the, the law was passed. So, now we lost Friday, Monday. So, there was a very short span of time for us, even if we could do it. It's, and we're not tax advisors here. That's number one. You know, we can't tell people, yeah, we'll collect your taxes, it's okay. But one of the big things is our, our tax year starts June 1st. Our fiscal year starts June 1st. So, in order for it to be, according to the IRS ruling, in order for it to be deducted this for, in 2017, if you were someone who pays over $10,000 in taxes, it would have had to been a warrant had it been issued, or what they call an assessment. And we haven't even started talking about our budget until March. So, we don't vote until May on our budget. So, there's no, we're just not there yet. And I know some municipalities, for example, the town, has said for people to pay what the previous amount was last year. But, you know, so that's, that was their thought on how they would handle it. And I know there were people that were unhappy, but we, we couldn't do it, and we didn't want to give people false hope that they could deduct this money. And then all of a sudden, they paid out all this money, and they can't deduct it in their 2017 taxes. So, we just weren't able to do it. If we were able to do it, we would have figured out a way to make it happen. So, we apologize for that, but we didn't, it wasn't because we didn't want to do it. It wasn't because of anything else, but it just, you know, according to the IRS statements and different things, you know, we just run a different tax year. Now, we're in the same position, the school. Kevin and I were talking about this. Where did I put that paper, Kevin? I just want to, yeah, I just want to, so, the school, the school taxes are levied in September. May not be prepaid as such taxes relate to a future fiscal year that runs from July 2018 to June 30th, 2019. So, the only way that you could prepay your school taxes is the second half that is due in January. So, you could have paid your second half of your school taxes, which is, your school tax is your biggest tax. So, if you want to prepay a tax, it's your school tax. So, the school taxes, so everyone knows, everybody remembers this because it's a substantial tax, is paid in September, and the other one is paid by January 30th of the following year. So, what you, what would have been the thing to do, and I'm not a tax advisor, so I'm not giving any tax advice, but the thing to do would have been, instead of waiting till January 30th of 2018 to pay the school tax second half, you would have paid it by the end of December.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure, absolutely.
The school tax, which was, because I paid the school tax over in Cortland, and I believe that, what I get the impression was, that was the only tax they were accepting. And the reason they were accepting it is also because the assessment was already made for that, for that period of time. So, that, that's why it was being accepted from Cortland. I don't know if Cortland was accepting any other tax other than the school tax.
Yeah, I have, I actually have it here, just so everyone, you know, I'm just going into this, so, because there was so much confusion and questions. It says here, as we are unable at this time to compute the actual 2018 county, town, fire, and special district taxes, we request that you remit payment in the amount equal to your 2017 town and county tax bill. So, they, they were taking that, they were taking that payment from the town, not only the school tax, but they were taking those to the town in the county tax bill that was a previous year. So, for us, it, it's a total accounting nightmare, this whole thing. So, we didn't want to disappoint anyone and, and be collecting the taxes, and then find out in the end that they, they paid, prepaid their taxes really early, and they couldn't use them in 2017 taxes. So, I'm sorry, I just wanted to go off what you were saying on that, because that, where some people were disappointed. Did you have anything else?
One more small thing.
Okay.
We put that speed monitoring device on Westchester Avenue, and we compared a printout from it, and I just wanted to give everybody an update. From, I guess about December, I mean, October 31st to the 15th of December, we had 31,966 passes by the machine.
So, over 31,000 cars went-
Almost 32,000 passed.
In a month?
In, in that month and a half period, yes.
Okay.
We had-
So, that's about 1,000 a day?
Yeah.
A little less.
Cars going 41, between 41 and 45 miles, there were seven. Cars going between 46 and 50 miles per hour, three. So, we had 10 going between 40 and 50 miles an hour. That was it, out of the 32,000.
But that, they, the, the, the speed thing was put in a curve where cars are going to be slowing down anyway. It should have been put out in the straightaway where the cars are flying.
We put it where the person that came in and had a complaint about it, and that's why we kind of put it there.
Yeah, well, it was complaining in the curve. The cars are speeding in the straightaway.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can move it around and move to other spots, but I just wanted to point out that there was very few-
Still a pretty impressive figure.
Very, yeah. So, just wanted to give you an update on it.
So, we were thinking, the thought was that there were a lot more people doing the 40 to 50 in, on that road.
Yeah, so, there were only 10 out of the 32,000.
Like you just said in the past, it's deceptive. You look at a car, you think it's speeding, but would you, you know, because you're on a small street, but when you put out the radar gun, they're actually not going as fast as you would think, right?
Yeah. But also those, 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 those machines, you usually can see those-
Sure.
You know, and gives you ample time to slow down and go through the, go over whatever they put, where they put a black tape on the floor or something.
Was that facing, it only faces one way?
It faces one way.
And it was facing the circle?
Yes.
So, you're coming out of the circle into a curve. How fast can you be going? It's amazing that somebody was actually going 45 miles at all in that spot. That's pretty outrageous.
Yeah, that was on a straightaway, you'd probably get higher.
We did have the complainer who said that there was a large number, so, we can move it, and we can move to other spots and see.
Maybe the next time where we have our pumping station-
Okay.
-on the lake there, like the opposite side of the street, maybe?
The straightaway.
The straightaway. Sure.
And that might, might get different numbers from there.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Just going to give you an update on it, though.
All right, no, thank you for those numbers.
Should we borrow that for Tate Avenue?
Sure. We borrow it from the town of Cortland, and we can put it in different locations.
Yeah, maybe we can put it there for, on a straightaway for a little while, just to-
Sure.
Put some people's minds at ease.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, just wanted to update, and that's all I have.
Well, Kevin, one question on the new IDs. When are we going to start that process?
We're starting the process now. It's, it's started to quiet down a little bit. We're going to set it up on the computer and start, put a form together and start getting people to come in and get their IDs taken.
Very good.
IDs. And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Okay. So, in January, in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be going to one of the senior meetings and talking to the seniors, giving them an update of what's going on with Entergy. And also, we're going to be going over the survey, and I will be answering any questions they might have. In February, I'd like to set up a night meeting. I was doing coffee with the mayor, and there was, just wasn't a huge turnout. It was only a few people that came, so. So, February, I'd like to set up one night that anybody that wants to, and I had coffee and, and donuts, yes. But I'd like to set up a meeting in February so people can come in and ask any questions they have about Entergy, but also if they'd like to go over the survey with the group there. I'd be more than happy to go over anything with them and answer whatever questions they might have about what's going on and going forward. On December 19th, there was a New York State Task Force meeting, which I am on the State Task Force, and two takeaways from the meeting. One was the New York State Independent Operators. It's a organization that's independent, as I've been told. They've done a study, and they believe that in 2020 and beyond, there is, there was really no need for the energy at Indian Point. So, they're saying it would be fine for Entergy to close. So, but one of the, one of the big points I want to make, as we were talking, I asked a question, there's three oil, gas-burning plants that are being built. So, they're using that as, for the replacement. And I asked the question, there's one, I said, you know, there's one that's having problem having, getting gas to the plant, and the DEC is giving them a hard time, and, you know, they, they need the gas to go to the plant so that the plant operates. They're assuming that plant is coming online in 2018, this year, but there's still no resolution to the gas. So, I said, you've included that as one of the replacement gas-fired plants? And they said, yes. And I said, oh, so, and if they don't get the gas? So, they, they feel confident that the energy will be there for the replacement of Indian Point as of 2017. So, there'll be more updates on that, and I'll let you know. One of the things that I think was good for the Village of Buchanan, the, the task force, the state has hired this company called DL English, and we've spoken about that before. And they're looking at the Indian Point property, and they've come up with a very interesting report. There's three pieces of the property they feel that could be developed. One is the 60 acres I've spoken about. There's another section of land, 15 acres, and there's, there's just different sections they feel that would be able to be redeveloped. So, that kind of gave us some hope when we saw that. They're looking into that. There's also a few other properties they're going to be looking into for us. And the reason why we're looking for redevelopment is we're looking to replace our tax base. So, it's not going to completely replace everything, but it's, it's a start. And what we always have to keep in mind is, all that property is owned by Entergy. Entergy would have to want to sell that property. So, this is all contingent on Entergy selling the property, but it's something going forward we're working on. What else do we have? The Buchanan 2021 meeting. I think our first meeting was very good. We have a very good group of people. We're going to be addressing all different kinds of things, including the spent fuel casks on site at Entergy. And we were able to do a tour just before Christmas. We went over, and we saw where the spent fuel casks were being stored on a concrete pad. They told us that there will eventually be 120 spent fuel casks that will be on the property. They have not built the second pad yet, nor have they decided where the second pad is going to be. But that's going to be important for the village going forward, especially if the Stranded Act is approved in Congress in the Senate. And I'll just quickly, the Stranded Act is where communities are compensated per kilo of spent fuel that is stored in the community. So, you know, we're going to have 120 casks. I still have to get the answer of how many kilos that is, but it's compensation for storing that on, on our, in our community. So, I thought it was very interesting for the people who have never seen, have been on Entergy's property or seen a spent fuel cask. My, the Buchanan 2021 people will be working closely with that, dealing with that going forward. Some people's thoughts are that it should be spread throughout the property. Our thoughts are not. For security reasons, they need to stay in a relatively small space so that they can remain secure and safe. And we feel that, that's probably going to be stored there for quite a while. But going, you know, that's just one of the issues we're working with. But I thought it was kind of interesting to, to go over there and look at them again. And we will, going forward in either, well, March is an outage, in April sometime, the Buchanan 2021 committee will be back, going back over to Entergy, and they will tour the plant itself, and also go back to look at the spent fuel pad. So, that's what I have for now. It's, last year was a tough year. We're coming up on the first anniversary of the announcement of Entergy's closing. We've gotten a lot of information. We've gone to a lot of meetings. There's a lot happening. There's a lot of balls in the air. There's no decisions made yet. That's why the Buchanan 2021 committee was formed. We will be looking at all aspects of Entergy's closing, including the village's, how we run our business, so to say. Um, so, like I said, it's a good group, we have a lot of work to do going forward, um, and, uh, we will just, we're, we're, we're working with everyone, um, and I think there's different options, but like I said, there's a lot of balls in the air, there's nothing that's settled right now, and that's what we're working on, so. That's all I have for tonight, I wish everyone a very happy new year, hopefully, it's a calmer, quieter new year, um, and we have our work cut out for us, but that's what we're here for. Thank you, and, um, trustee Funchen, deputy mayor Funchen.
Thank you, thank you, mayor. Uh, happy new year to everybody. Uh, in the past month, we, uh, attended the senior luncheon for the Christmas, their Christmas party, it was a lot of fun, as it is always. Also, we attended the lunch that we have for the, uh, the employees here in the village. Again, I wanna thank the employees for their dedicated work throughout the year, uh, they're, we're lucky to have everybody here, and I think they do a great job. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Dan O'Neill on his selection as the grand marshal of this year's St. Patrick's Day Parade, it will be, be coming up. Also, uh, we will be celebrating Martin with the Kings' Day this, this month, and I think if people take a moment to think about what he, he did in his lifetime, that it was all revolved around nonviolence in his attempt to change things in our society, and it would be good in today's world with so, so much violence going on that, uh, that we think about the way he went about it. Uh, also, um, I was, I was just informed by the highway superintendent, and I didn't realize this, that it was just a good piece of information, is that since we're having this very, very cold weather, especially for seniors like myself and other people, that salt does not work under fifteen degrees, is that right, Bob?
Or around there.
Around there, so, you know, we're, we're expecting temperatures in Friday, zero, one degree, et cetera, and, uh, keep that in mind for your own home, when you put salt out, it's not gonna work then, and, uh, also, out on the roads, there's nothing they can do about it, they're not gonna be able to melt anything. So, keep it in mind too, for instance, if you gotta get, go to the supermarket, maybe go, uh, on Thursday instead of going on Friday, um, that's, that's very good information, and I, I hope people watching realize that, pass that on to their, to their neighbor. I have two things I just wanna bring up, um, I, I've seen on, on, uh, the news, on, on television, and I know we're supposed to be getting new water meters, is that right? There, there seems to have been a, a pretty, in, in, I think, somewhere in New Jersey, pretty big problem with these new water meters, some of them not working, and people getting bills for two, three thousand dollars for, for water usages. So, uh, I just, I hope that when we get them, there'll be some, uh, the, the meter company that these people bought, the community bought in New Jersey, bought from a place in New Jersey, that I hope that they, they're supposed to have sent out their people to check them out, and they did find that there was problems with some of their meters. So, I, I think we should be aware of that, you know, coming, coming down the pike. And last thing, I just, driving around the village at Christmas time, I wonder if next, just a thought, just to throw out there, for next Christmas, that we have some sort of a, like, a village contest for those with the nicest, uh, Christmas decorations.
That would be nice, we used to do a snowman contest, but then we didn't get too much snow, but that would be nice with the decorations. That would be good.
Yes.
Get very competitive here.
Yeah, we've got some nice houses, some decorated really nicely.
Good, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, trustee Zachary.
Thank you. Yeah, so, first off, it's really cold out, stay in your house, don't come out until next Tuesday, everybody, okay? I, I just wanted, this, the paper you have here for the, uh, the, what I was proposing to kind of do a few, a few improvements, use about five, ten thousand dollars of the recreation fund, do a few improvements in the property up front, um, uh, you know, make it a little bit more hospitable to people that wanna use it, like a small park. Um, I sketched in a couple of possible bench locations, it's not really very good as far as the scale, because it makes it look like, it makes it look like everything's right on top of each other, there's actually a good bit of room out there, and one day, when the weather is better, if we all just maybe, you know, go outside before a meeting, I can, can mark those locations with a, with a traffic cone or something, and then get a better sense, but there's more space than it looks like in this illustration I did with the bench. What I'd also like to do is put up a sign, um, you know, calling it Village Hall Park or Village Hall Commons, with a little history of the school building, um, I think it's one of the few attractive historic buildings that we still have here, and a little plaque with basic information about it would be very good. I do have a, a little summation from Francis, not, one of the letters Francis, Francis Stein made up of a brief history of Buchanan, uh, he was our former village historian, and that, this building was built in nineteen-ten as a high school. When Hendrick Hudson High School was built, it became the elementary school, at least one person here on the board went to that school, yeah?
Who was that? That's me.
And it, and it operated as a school until nineteen-sixty-seven.
Yes, and I think there's a plaque out front that states when it was, um, when it was dedicated. No, no, there's, um, right out front, I think there's a plaque too, when it was dedicated, nineteen-seventy-six?
That's Village Hall.
Village Hall.
That's downstairs, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, it's in the building?
I think it's out front, is it?
So, anyway, I'm talking about one of those metal outdoor signs that just says, you know.
I mean, Eileen.
Village Hall Park.
Eileen, past through these, uh, these rooms here.
You know?
And, uh, yeah.
If we have any.
Lot of history.
I think in general, if we have any place that's kind of has some historic value, we should put up a little sign, just to, so people can appreciate, and, and a lot of people that come here are new and don't know this.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, it's a changing village. Uh, so, if you go, could look at that, and have, if you have any questions, um, you know, I did include some paperwork showing a couple of bench possibilities, um, you know, and they're, the benches are not really that expensive to put a couple of benches, um, and these benches would get anchored in with concrete into the ground, and actually, um, I, I believe our highway department can do this, the highway foreman did, uh, say that they're able to do that, so, if we want to go that route, uh, that's, makes it an even more economical, uh, improvement.
Can I ask a question, Nick?
Yes.
The two benches, uh, the one, the, the metal looking ones, and then the, uh, they're actually, I guess, pl- plastic resin wood, which.
Yeah, that's like, it's like Trex.
Yeah, right, and, and, I mean, the, and the, uh, the, the plastic resin wood one is, uh, more expensive, but it does look a lot better than the metal.
I think it does, I think it might hold up better, too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is, is there any difference, did you find in research, and there's any difference in how, how they hea- hold up?
Uh, I, I don't really, uh, that's not really included on the sites where I got this, but I can try to find out.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody know?
We can, we can discuss this further at the next workshop, too, 'cause it's more of a workshop item.
Yeah.
Town might have a good, yeah, workshop item.
Yeah.
So, anyway, if you could all look it over.
Then you can get that information.
'Cause I'd love to get that moved ahead.
Excellent.
Also, just a, a, um, a little follow-up on what you're talking about with taxes, I, I personally am, uh, you know, just, spoke to an accountant, and, you know, they say this tax, this new federal tax bill is gonna help everybody, uh, but then, when they really tell you, they, they say, I think I saw it, that eight percent will, of the people in the country will actually see a tax increase, well, guess what, most of those people are gonna be in the area where we live, here in the northeast, and in other high-tax states like California. Um, this ten thousand cap on, on, uh, what you're able to write off on your taxes is not only your property taxes, but what you pay in New York State income tax. Now, my New York State income tax combined with my real estate tax, even though our taxes here in Buchanan go a few miles away, people are paying double. You know, not uncommon to be paying twenty thousand in the town of Cortland, uh, or in Croton, um, and in most of Westchester, and other suburban counties around New York. Um, so, so, the ten thousand cap includes what you pay in your real estate tax when you do your state tax return, too. So, I'm certainly over that cap, the rates are a little bit lower, I don't have, I don't know what my numbers will be exactly, maybe the same, maybe I'll, maybe I'll do a little better, but whatever it is, I'm mainly pissed because it's unfair to me, to the people in this region in these high-tax states, and it's unfair for another reason. Every state pays out a certain amount of federal tax dollars, every state gets back a certain amount of, of, um, of federal funds for programs. In New York State, for every dollar we contribute to the federal government, we get seventy-four cents back in federal programs. And if you go to Alabama, for every dollar they pay in federal funds, federal taxes, they get back two dollars and three cents. If you go to New Mexico, they get back two dollars and sixty-three cents for every dollar in federal tax they pay. Hawaii gets back two thirty-eight for every dollar they pay, Mississippi gets, Mississippi, Alabama, these are the biggest federal-dependent states going, they get back, Mississippi gets back two dollars and forty-seven cents for every dollar in federal tax. New Jersey is worse than New York, they pay, for every dollar in tax they pay, they only get back forty-nine cents in federal funds, federal programs. Um, and, um, California is also, gets back less than they pay. So, we, here, uh, in New York, are already subsidizing some of the poorer states, and truthfully, you know, it, that's, everyone bads mouths, bad mouths the idea of socialism, but that's socialism, when you're paying more in tax to subsidize the people that have less, i.e. Mississippi, Alabama, New Mexico. So, so, the fact that we are already contributing to the support, and now we get less of a benefit from this, from this tax bill is what pisses me off, so, um, I say California and New York should secede from the Union.
Well, let me add to that, Nick, I, I like to, except, if you Google, if you Google military bases, and you'll find out how many of these military bases are located in states that do not have income taxes, or they're high property taxes, because, as we all know, military bases make a lot of money for every, for the community that they're in. And we have very few in the northeast, be quite honest with you, I'm still a little pissed on that, that on nine-eleven, we had to wait for two jets to come from Cape Cod to protect thirty million people, they're still, haven't fixed that, and I, I couldn't agree with you more, Nick, it's, it's, this tax, this is a tax on tax, and when they instituted the federal income tax, they recognized that you should not be taxed on tax you're paying elsewhere. So, this, it's absolutely absurd, and I don't know if I'll go as far as seceding from the country, but, uh, I, I think, you know, to use a term that was used before, I think it's, we in these states should be talking about repeal and replace.
Yeah, it, it's definitely unfair, um, you know, I mean, okay, wages are higher in New York and California than they are in Alabama.
Property values are higher.
Property values are higher, so it's proportional, you know, you make more, you spend more, uh, but, but, you know, the, the way the, uh, Senate and Congress works right now, uh, there's a lot of power in those other states, and, and certainly, none of them wanted to recognize the fact that they're already being supported, the financial engine of this country is California and New York. And, um.
Okay.
I don't know, just, just keep aware of the issues, everybody, and, and make sure you're a voter, because, you know, that's really all you can do right now.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate, because that's what I like to do. So, one of the things is, the deduction for married couples has doubled, so I believe it went from twelve to twenty-four thousand now. So, that should, should compensate a little for this.
No, no, I, I.
But here's, here's the big thing, here's the huge, big thing. Even before this happened, we pay phenomenal, astronomical, ridiculous taxes here in this state. Now, the governor, thank God, is maybe going to listen now, and Rich, we've had this discussion before. We are one of eight or nine states in this country that pay solely, the property tax owners solely support everything. So, the governor has said that they, we need to restructure the New York State tax system. Well, maybe this is our opportunity now to start changing this tax structure here in the state, because really, for the, the property owners to foot the bill for absolutely everything, when other states have figured out a better way to do this, and when we're considered one of eight or nine states only that still does that, well, there's something wrong with that picture, you can't burden the property tax owners anymore, they're, they're suffering. You have people leaving this state, and, you know, we can get into this whole discussion, it affects the village, look, so we'll bring it back down, you know, I could get into this whole federal discussion, this whole state discussion, but let's bring it that, back down to our village. You know what, we pay, we pay high property taxes here, and we're going to be paying more, and this is just one piece of the puzzle. So, now, this is, the, now, it's right onto the state's doorstep, so, what are you going to do to help the state, these small communities, everything in the state? This is, this is the problem, so, maybe, yes, it's a bad thing, maybe this is not a good thing for the state, this federal tax law, I don't know all the details yet, so I don't wanna comment too much, but in, on the other hand, that forces the state's hand to relook at things and say, hmm, yeah, we have some pretty hefty property taxes here, how can we fix our tax law, how can we fix our system here? So, sometimes, when something bad happens, it forces other people's hands to figure out a better way.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I'm not saying that, it, it, high taxes are a problem, what I'm talking about is the discrepancy between what we, how we're getting hit in, in an area like this compared to how some of the rural areas that we already subsidize, those figures I gave are prior to that tax change, those figures will, will probably increase now.
But how many years has this been going on? This isn't like something, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I'm just saying, we already net pay more into the government than we get back from the government, and yet, we are impacted more so than the areas we're already subsidizing.
Welcome to New York.
That's all I'm pointing out.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying, this has been a, a problem for a while, but now, it's, it's just going to.
But, but you know what, though, it's, it's, it's good you brought that up, because I've always wanted to move to Memphis, Tennessee, or Tupelo, Mississippi.
There's your opportunity.
And now that you read all that, it gives me the extra incentive, so if I do leave, it's because of you.
Okay.
Do they, do they still pay, uh, police pensions down there? Gee, should they still pay, uh, police pensions down there in Memphis?
Oh, they pay them everywhere.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, that's why, Bob, like, King in Memphis. People, we pay, we pay all the freight, we pay for the schools, and we pay for everything else, and then people, when they retire, they move out of the state, and so, they go to states that brag that, well, we don't have income taxes, but they don't have children to, to educate the same amount as we do. And another, another issue is, which Teresa brings up, which I think is a, an excellent one, about how, how we pay for our school systems, which is the biggest one, you go to New York City, the property taxes are actually not that terrible, because they have an income tax.
Right.
I remember there was one, uh, one of, one of these big buildings that was built, it was a, a thirty-million-dollar duplex, and their taxes, their property taxes was sixteen thousand.
See?
Yeah, but also, don't forget, people come to this area because of the good schools. You can go someplace and get, and pay about a quarter of what you're paying in taxes here, and you're gonna have schools that you're not gonna wanna put your kids in.
Right.
So, people come and pay those taxes, I came up from New York City and I said, I either stay here in New York City and I lay out more for private school, or I go up there and I pay it in the form of my taxes for my kid to go to school, so, you know, it's, it's, that's a draw, it's, you know, it's, there's a lot of factors to this. Anyway, cutting into that, the, the bigger picture outside of the village is not something that any of us usually like to do, but I just had to follow up on that tax thing.
We just have to worry about the village.
I'm just gonna move on to a couple of other things quick, the, my village email is still not working, and I know, and two other people have told me their email is not working, and I just wanna see if we're making any effort to, to tell, uh, to change back to the one we had before, I mean, I don't know who we go with, but this was, this was a change from a previous email that, that we were not happy with, and I don't know where we go, but I, uh, I don't, my, I don't know, my village email's not working.
Maybe on that, on that issue, maybe, instead of, I don't know how the expenses go about paying for it, but maybe there should be just one village email to, to the village here, and then the, the village manager could elect or, or, you know, take out, send it to our personal emails.
Yeah, but, uh, we also need to, you know, on the website, you wanna have a, a place that people can contact you.
Yeah, I'm not thrilled with the Outlook program anyhow, but, you know, if there's something else we could do, that's. So, well, we've talked about a lot of things here, oh, wait, there's more.
So, um, the, um, last thing is, uh, Earth Day this year falls on April twenty-second, it's a Sunday, um, and I'd like to put together something, uh, for Earth Day at Lenzkove Park. Um, you know, you know, we did one year, we had a park cleanup day, so, I'm thinking perhaps to do that again this year, uh, maybe have some other events, uh, a tree planting, or, or some other kind of environmental activities, um, uh, maybe, maybe something that we could do with kids for Earth Day, uh, I'll talk to the rec supervisor, see if she has any, um, ideas, uh, but I'm mentioning it now, so if anybody that's, hears this, has any ideas, uh, if you can contact me at my email, it doesn't work.
Yeah, well.
Email that doesn't work.
Um, you can, you can, um, I, I am able to check it on, on an iPad. You can, you can, I, I am able to check it on, on an iPad that I have, but, but I've had trouble responding, but if I do see an email, I'll find a way to respond, it doesn't work on my desktop, I can open it on my iPad, but when I try to respond to people, it gets, it, it doesn't always work.
There's always smoke, the smoke signals.
Smoke signals, it would go.
When you do it, does it have that circle, it keeps turning, and it says data, still loading?
It's, no, what happens is, I get a message, message, it says error message 404 or something.
So it's, it's something we have to work on.
Unable to connect, yeah, it's, it's the same error message I get every time.
We want to stay incommunicado.
Yeah, so that's it, just Happy New Year to everybody, and, that's it.
And that's it. Trustee Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, on the Joe O2 passing, I believe the time for his services at Carter's is from 5:00 to 8:00, if I'm not mistaken.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, January 3rd.
Right, and from 5:00 to 8:00 at Carter's. I, like Rich, went to the senior luncheon, and it was fantastic to be out there with our, our warriors from World War II, and everyone having a good time, it was very lovely, and, and the food was very good, so it was a great time had by all. Just want to say, as Rich always says, a yeoman job to our highway people, our volunteer fire and ambulance people, our police officers that are out there in this cold weather, answering calls and doing what they do best, and again, I personally can't thank you enough for, for what you all do, and especially in these, these frigid temperatures and stuff, so a special Happy New Year to you all, and again, saluting you for the fine job that you do, all our village employees, so thank you so much, and that's it.
All right, thank you, trustee Jackson, and trustee Pasquale.
Thank you, ma'am, just want to wish everybody a, a happy and healthy New Year, and a prosperous New Year. I'm going to continue, I've been doing this the last few meetings, where I'm going to go over some of the service calls from our Buchanan PD, and, so I'm just going to read them, and this way, everybody kind of gets an idea of kinds of jobs that our, our police officers do respond to. On December 2nd, P. O'Farrell observed a drug transaction in the Fourth Street, Donahue Street area, and conducted a stop, he subsequently arrested a 33-year-old man with unlawful possession of marijuana, and he has a court date pending, and around that area, there's always been that, possible drug activities, and it's good to see that they, that they, that our officers spent some time there and did make an arrest for marijuana there. On December 5th, at 3:55 a.m., P. O. Palmetto responded to a call of a possible domestic incident on Lindsay Avenue, he found a couple yelling at each other in the street, P. O. Palmetto separated the two and escorted them off the street, so he deescalated something that could have got way out of hand. On December 13th, P. O. Buddy affected a warrant for arrest of a 23-year-old Buchanan resident for a past domestic incident on Tate Avenue, defendant was arraigned by Judge Daly, and his record, and his return court date would be on January the 9th. On December 20th, P. O. Farrell arrested a 27-year-old Peekskill male for operating a vehicle with a suspended license, as well as operating an unregistered vehicle, and multiple other infractions, his return date is January the 9th. On December 21st, P. O. Loschner responded to a Buchanan home to investigate the report of an unwanted person refusing to leave, this officer advised the person to leave the residence or face charges of trespass and possible order of protection violations. And lastly, on Christmas Eve, Sergeant Guida responded to, responded to unlock a car door where an 18-month-old child was locked inside, the vehicle was unlocked by the officer without further incident, thank God he's, were able to make a call like that and get somebody here quickly, because that, that's a scary, that's a scary thought. And, and also, it's getting cold, it is cold, and wouldn't be a bad idea if we have any elderly that we know, just give them a phone call, maybe, just reach out and, and just make sure they're okay, because sometimes they, they don't like to ask for help even though they need it, and sometimes, like I said, a phone call or just a knock on the door to make sure they're okay goes a long way, and that's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, comments from the floor, any comments from the floor tonight?
You don't have to.
Thank you, Eileen.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh-oh. Is this on or not on?
It doesn't sound like it.
Okay, yes, no?
Yes.
Oh.
It is, okay, he's on, yes.
If it weren't for Nick, I wouldn't have to get up here, I tell you, you know, I just want to say, if you had Bernie Sanders as president, who was also on the same line as the current president for the tax that was passed, the tax, tax law that was passed, I don't know if you'd be griping as much, but since you are griping, then you have a decision to make, like having a job, you either stay, put up, or get out and shut up, so that's the bottom line of that, and I really like you, Nick, actually. I really like you, but when I see, when I hear this, it, I just don't.
First of all, you're assuming I would have voted for Bernie Sanders.
Let me finish.
Oh, boy.
I'm not saying anything about you voting for Bernie Sanders, I'm just saying that if you hadn't mentioned the tax code, I, the tax law, I probably wouldn't have gotten up.
This has nothing to do with the president, he's not smart enough to put together a bill like that, it's the Republicans.
And I really don't feel that you have, as a trustee, on the board right now, that's an unfair thing to say, no matter what, it's un.
What's unfair?
It's un, it's disrespectful about the current president, whether I like him or whether I don't like him, that's just, I don't feel that you should do that right now. No, that's not a fact, that's an opinion, but it doesn't make a difference, I'm just saying that there are other politicians that have introduced bills of similar nature that may end up taxing you unfairly, that's just the nature of New York State, you know, and if you look at the socialism that was propagated for the election, it was to equalize everybody, and so even though people are equalized prior to this tax, they are even more equalized after the tax, so, you know, we really shouldn't complain.
I have really no idea what you're talking about with equalized, thank you for your comments.
Meaning that Alabama, Mississippi, and all the rest of them may get a little bit more, because we're going to pay more, but I agree with Teresa, we do have to look at this, this is a problem.
Thank you, Eileen. Okay, and this is, this is a great country, we can say what we want to say, you know, we thank our veterans and all those who keep us safe, that, why we have these freedoms, and we all can agree to disagree, and in this country, we need to learn how to do that better, even if we don't like what someone says, that does not mean that they are our enemy, and we need to get along, we need to play nice in the sandbox, so I'm just saying that in general terms, so, you know, this is something we've gone away from in this country, you know, we can agree to disagree. How's that sound? Welcome to the United States of America, anyhow, any other comments? Good, all right, thank you so much for coming, oh, wait, oh, I, I caught myself this time, on a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, and have a great Buchanan Day.
What was the, hey, Nick?